Okay, we'll return to our meeting after executive session. Move on to the agenda. Old business being done on our agenda, we'll move to new business. Department presentation for community marketing. You can't tell us?
Because Molly wasn't there, you couldn't have been getting it. So I, just like, as part of our, as part of our reorganization, one of the things that I did was, I moved community marketing from under Parks and Rec. Well, I'd originally pushed it into Parks and Rec, then I pulled it out of Parks and Rec. So it's kind of under the city manager's office, and Tabitha will be kind of supervising community marketing and human resources, and so that's why she's presenting the community marketing platform. So.
So you're the HR person now?
I am the HR person supervisor now.
And who is the HR person?
Haley Rimsburg is, she's been our HR person for about a year and a half now.
Okay.
And then Kyla Wilson is our payroll?
Coordinator.
Coordinator. I don't know what we call that.
So as David said, my name is Tabitha Sharp, I'm a city clerk, and I am going to present the community marketing's year in review for 2018. Molly has several objectives as the community marketing person for El Dorado. Her first objective is to market El Dorado as a destination to visitors, to support events and conventions that produce hotel stays, to help promote all local community events, facility management for the Civic Center and Train Depot, website maintenance, and to provide updates to our residents about city projects. She does that via social media, the media screens that you see around town that the city's done, the posters that she places downtown, so shows a little bit of everything. Here's a few pictures of our last year's events. In 2018, Molly put on three summer concerts at the depot with the help of several other departments in the city of El Dorado. She helped the AAU Regional Track, Ballet in the Park, and Drums Across Kansas. She's also listed several other events that we had this year, this past year. The Governor's One Shot Turkey Hunt, NJCAA Outdoor Track Championships, D.A. Music Fest, Holly Frontier Western, Celebration of Freedom, and Trick or Treat Down Main Street, as well as Old Fashioned Christmas. Molly's list of accomplishments for 2018, the El Dorado flag was created and distributed. Happy to say that that's, it's been taken on quite well in our community. It's very popular. We had a reorganization and major edit of our website, and so if you haven't been, David showed that to you a couple of weeks ago, but it's a lot easier to move around now and a lot more user-friendly. The media screens, you'll see one out in the hall when you come into commission room, they're at the library, and various other public buildings in town. It's kind of like Channel 7 for people who don't have Channel 7. The banner program was implemented. Molly helps Main Street with that program. She's on that group that decides who can and can't put up banners downtown and helps them get the right size, and now that they've got all that figured out. She had, she put on multiple events in 2018. She managed the Civic Center and Train Depot, as we already stated. She got a tourism and marketing grant from KDWPT, and that helped her pay for the Experience El Dorado campaign. It's a series of four videos that she'll be releasing over the next couple of months. She's released two already, and then also helped pay for a billboard. She wanted me to show you one of those videos. So this video is the sports facilities and conventions promo, and hopefully it plays. David, did you break the computer?
It's, okay.
Welcome to El Dorado. This city has so much to offer, including a state park for camping, boating, and special events, an 18-hole golf course, three baseball and softball complexes, 20 biking and walking paths, and a new 18-hole disc golf course, eager to host your next tournament. And the BG Products Veterans Sports Complex is no stranger to hosting large-scale events either. This amazing facility has experience hosting high school and NJCAA football, track, soccer, and the annual Drums Across Kansas tour. If large meeting space is what you need, we've got you covered. Located at Butler Community College, the Hubbard Welcome Center has a sizable banquet room, catering on-site, and smaller meeting rooms that can accommodate up to 800 people. Another meeting option located near the heart of downtown is the El Dorado Civic Center. We'll be happy to host your next conference, business training, or reception. The Activity Center can accommodate your indoor recreation needs for basketball and volleyball. And a tournament or meeting would not be complete without great food, and shopping, too. And if you need a place to catch some Z's, there are over 350 rooms within three miles of shopping and dining. We know there's other places you can host that big tournament, event, or meeting, but why bother?
We shot some footage, and then we also had some help with a local photographer, Chad Wittenberg, gave us some pictures, and then we used some other pictures that had been donated in the contest last year, so those can be seen in some of those videos. As we said, Molly's responsible for facility management. She books rentals, manages room setups, and marketing for each facility that we own. The Civic Center and the Train Depot are the two that we have, and you can see the history of rentals since 2015 there. The rentals for the Civic Center stayed about the same. We had a pretty good year in '16, but other than that, we've kind of maintained. The Train Depot, number of Train Depot rentals has gone up. Molly's involved in several things across the state as El Dorado CVB, so she's in the TAC, which is Tourism Industry Association of Kansas, Sports Kansas, South Central Kansas Tourism Region, and the Kansas Explorers Club. She also goes to the State Fair and TAC Conference as CVB Director. Upcoming projects and events in '19, and she's going to assist the Times Gazette in completing a new El Dorado Visitors Guide and Map. She'll be advertising in lots of publications across the state, publicizing the four new promo videos. She's started with social media, but her hope is to get beyond that, and that way we see them in other places as well. We will be doing a photo contest and another wall calendar this year. It will be limited to one time of the year, though, so you'll be able, make sure you take your pictures, because she'll collect them for that one, one month out of this year. And then she would like to increase rentals at Civic Center and Depot. We have several events coming up. AAU Regional Track is June 1st, the Summer Concerts at the Depot will be June 14th and July 12th, that's a tentative date, Drums Across Kansas, July 15th, D.A. Music Fest, July 25th through 27th, Holly Frontier Western Celebration will actually be August 9th through the 11th, and the Lantern Festival on September 14th. Major trends and challenges in 2019, Holly Frontier will be doing another turnaround. In 2018, their turnaround resulted in the highest, or in high numbers for the fourth quarter transient guest tax. A turnaround for the fall of 2019 has potential for another great fourth quarter for us. Challenge, Molly is going to be having a baby in July, and that will be the height of her event season, so I will be doing lots of summer concerts in the, at the depot and Lantern Fest and, what else do I have? Drums Across Kansas. And so Molly currently does not have an assistant for those things, so myself and some of the other departments will be helping. That is all. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move on to item 12 on our agenda, would be the Series 2019A Bond Resolution Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mitch Walter with Gilmore and Bell, Bond Counsel to the City. Nice to see everybody again. For the city's upcoming bond issuance, there are a total of 12 projects, most of which were financed by the city's temporary notes, Series 1885, which were issued a few years ago and are now coming due, and so with the notes coming due and the projects being done, and the city having recently completed the assessments for the remaining projects that are not previously been assessed, it's time to move forward with the bond issue. And so the resolution that the city has before tonight basically authorizes the city, in connection with Bond Counsel and the city's financial advisor, Springstead, to go forward with preparing the necessary documents to offer the city's bonds for sale in a, in a public offering. And so one of those, one of those actions is the authorization of the preparation of preliminary official statement. That's the document that goes out to the potential purchasers of the bonds, and sets the bond sale for April 1st this year. And so basically, on April 1st, the city would be in the market, receive bids for the sale of the bonds, and in theory, accept the low bidder for the purchase of the Series 2019A bonds, and then come back and approve the actual financing documents, bond resolution, bond ordinance, moving forward to May 1st close, when the city would actually receive funds from the sale of the bonds and pay off the temp notes. And so this resolution that the city has before tonight basically authorizes all of those further actions that take place down the road.
For total, $3,025,949?
Sort of. Those were the total project costs. That does not take into account prepaid special assessments for certain of these projects. Springstead, the city's financial advisor, along with Tammy and other folks at the city have worked together to size the bond issue preliminarily at $2,970,000.
David, do we have debt retiring at the same time as we take this bond on? What's kind of a?
We do not have debt retiring for, I believe the next debt issuance will be retiring will be 2021, 2022. So this will increase the amount of outstanding debt that we have, but because of the, as Mitch kind of alluded to, there were projects that were done, and you can float them with a temporary note for four years, so we've come to the point where it's due, and now we have to cash out and, well, redeem those temp notes and push to long-term bonding. And so that's what's driving some of this. And then, so that will increase the amount of outstanding bond we have by the amount of principal that is being borrowed, but then in the next couple of years, 2022, we have some bond capacity that will be coming off the debt.
And I would just add that the temporary notes and the amount of $2,548,000 are going to be retired. At this time, the city doesn't have any other temporary notes outstanding, so that is coming off as the principal of these amounts of bonds go on, so.
Sure.
And a, and a large number of these costs are reimbursed via specials to the city annually?
Okay.
So an important note there, any debt that is issued back by special assessments do not account against the city's statutory debt limit, so.
Do we have a ballpark or a feel for how much of this is, is backed by special assessments versus what the city is responsible for?
I wish I would have had that with me tonight.
I mean.
If you go through these projects, they're, they're residential developments, a good chunk of them, so a large portion of that is those homeowners, property owners.
So would it be safe to say 20% of this is maybe city and rest of it's, or is that even?
Don't we always bear a portion of them? We always pay a portion of every project.
Some, yeah.
We do. I would, I, I'd hate to put a percentage to it tonight, but all of these projects, like the paving of Country Club Road, has a large benefit district, you know, paving improvements on Haverhill, Griffith, all of these projects were once you all have authorized to have improvement districts.
Chris and I, that's another big one.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
We can, we can certainly get you those numbers, because we have the authorizing documents, so I can send you an email and pull up on that. But Scott is correct, it's a large majority of the projects are going to be.
Yeah, I guess it'd be worth knowing, just, just for comfort level in my own mind. And then the increase in debt service principal interest inside a year that's, that's over and above special assessments, we simply account for in this upcoming budget.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Anybody else have questions? Thank you for your work.
That's resolution number?
2878.
Yeah, if none, then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number 2878, resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2019A of the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Case been moved at second. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you again.
Thank you. We'll be back before you on April 1st with the result of the bond sale.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda would be interlocal agreement. We met, ahead of this commission meeting, we met with the school board to talk through interlocal agreements for a tennis court project. Came away from there with a consensus of a location and budget, and we also anticipated having an agreement revised by this meeting. Did that, did we get that?
Yes, we, we have a revised agreement. It does provide for the site of North Main Park as per the discussion, the consensus of the group at the discussion, as well as increasing the maximum not to exceed amount to 1.6 million based upon the cost estimate with the city and the school district paying half of those costs at $800,000. That is also a not to exceed sum that has been added to the, or amended in the agreement that you had prior to, to the meeting. So we've inserted the consensus site, and we have modified the amount based upon the cost estimate, understanding, of course, that the total project cost may come in less than that, that is the max cap. And so I guess if it, if it looks like it would exceed that amount, which we are not anticipating, the amendment, the agreement would have to be amended by both parties at subsequent time. And then I guess I would take any questions that anyone has on the specifics of the agreement.
He said all kinds of statements there. Stating there underneath the body of, I didn't, it didn't come out separately. So, the fence and the.
Walking path.
Walking path, all that's just.
Yeah, so the costs.
All that stuff's got to be moved.
Right. Right, right.
And it was projects cost as far as I'm concerned as we left that meeting.
Yeah, total project cost included, everything that was included in the cost estimate, so relocating the manholes in essence, relocating or realigning the pedestrian pathway, and also building a fence, railroad fence on the north end of the property, those are all included and remain in the project.
In the million six.
Yeah, in the million six.
In the 50/50 amount.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what took it to 1.6 was to, was to.
Thought we had a restroom there already.
We did, but it was the consensus of the group to build a.
Site-specific.
Site-specific restroom slash concession stand. The estimated cost of that is $85,000, so it takes the 1.5 and change up to about $1.6 million, including contingency and miscellaneous, so that's where the 1.6 came from.
We felt that it needed to have its own facility, like use it for storage, too.
Question number six. Says that we will be giving legal title to half the land the tennis court sits on.
Yeah, both parties will have a half interest in the land. It's my understanding that this was a provision, so the Activity Center agreement provided the framework for this agreement, and that was a provision that was included in that. The school district owns the land. We, well, now we own the land jointly, as well as the Activity Center building, and so that provision was included in this one as well.
But I think I hear what you're saying, it's not the whole park, it's just the footprint.
No, right.
That is correct.
So maybe, maybe somewhere along here it should say footprint instead of property?
Did you include your parking lot? Put a new parking lot?
Legal title to the real estate improvements and personal property used to operate and equip the complex, being the tennis court complex.
So the parking lot adjacent to it would be included?
So just the one adjacent to it, not the one at the.
That's correct. The ones that currently exist, we will retain title of those in whole.
Yeah, I think there's some gray area there. I would think we might get Ashlyn to weigh in, but.
Ashlyn has reviewed the document and didn't have any direct comments on that provision specifically. All of the comments that she had previously articulated as issues that she thought need to be resolved have been incorporated into the document and have been reviewed by USD490. So she has reviewed this and has approved of it in its form, but we can, I could definitely check with her on that.
Yeah, because I read that as the site for which a complex is, property which a site complex is cited, and the property which it cited is the whole park. I'd want to be sure that it's the footprint of the project.
If you look at number three, located at North Main Park, that is described, set for Exhibit A, the complex shall be, is that what is trying to cover a legal description for the boundary of where the tennis courts would be and the parking facilities?
Should be located at North Main Park on property that is described in Exhibit A. Correct. That'd be your footprint we're talking about, Exhibit A?
Okay. Exhibit A would be the, basically the plan of the complex? I just, I just don't want to.
The plan of the complex? The faded map that you showed us?
No, we'll actually get a surveyed legal description, because right now we don't have a legal description of the actual footprint.
Yeah.
So as part of this, what we have to do is we have to get a surveyed legal description that matches the footprint. We don't have that right now, so.
Okay, so that's, that's what will come in with attachment A.
Right.
Okay. All right, thanks, Kinder, for bringing that up. If there's any more questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Ordinance number?
G1296.
I move to approve ordinance number G1296, an ordinance pertaining to and authorizing the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to enter into, and the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement pursuant to KSA 12, 2901 ET section with United School District 490, Butler County, Kansas, for construction, maintenance, and use of a joint community tennis complex.
Second.
Okay, so moved at second. Any further question or comment?
This, will we ever use this concession stand?
Potentially. I mean, if we host events.
Well, and that, that was the side, the reason for the eight courts is to be able to hold, like, regionals and stuff like that. So, I mean, in the end, we could do AAU tennis, that, there's all kinds of those entities that Molly would be able to market to.
Right, or alternatively, if somebody just has an event, like a tennis event, they could utilize it, just the same. So we wouldn't necessarily have to be a city-specific event. If, if somebody in the general public would like to use it and sell concessions, they would be able to do that.
Like rent the ball fields.
Right.
On the north end of North Main Park, there is that field stone, is it a parking area? I'm assuming that comes out. I'm assuming the city will save the Flintstone?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Good comments. Anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yeah.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Do you have that for me to sign tonight, or is it?
I do.
You do? Okay. All right, move on to item 14, the Willet Building.
So the Willet Building, for those of you who may not know, is the building, the blue building located just right next to the Dairy Queen. We've previously talked about the future of that building, including possibly demolition. At that point in time, we had, the commission had not formally made a decision to authorize its demolition. In the meantime, the staff had been looking at maybe options for reuse. In fact, there was one potential option, somebody was looking for a building for a potential farmer's market, it wasn't going to work out for him. So we don't really have any desire to put any additional funds into it. It does need a lot of work if it were to be used, and so we bring it to you, seeking authorization to demolish the structure. The fiscal impact here suggests that it would cost between $2,000 and $3,000 to demolish. We'll do that in-house, so we still have to pay our folks, but that's the approximate cost of that. But the, the actual cost that we have right now in annual operations is about $200 of insurance. We don't, we don't have utilities or anything like that on the building, so 200 bucks. So we're not, we're not doing it to save money per se, but we're doing it because there's no use in the building. It's probably just needing to be removed. So with that, I would ask if there's any questions, but we are asking for authorization to demolish the structure.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I don't have trouble with tearing it down. Is there any interest from neighboring, when we just hold, hold the vacant property at that point?
I mean, we have not yet reached out to any adjacent properties to see if there's any interest.
It just becomes inventory of property at that point.
Right. But we could definitely reach out and take some.
Probably worth more as vacant land than with the building on it.
What?
Probably worth more as vacant land than with that building on it.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I'd entertain a motion.
I move to direct the city manager to proceed with the demolition of the Willet Building.
Second.
It's been moved at second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
It was hard, I spent a lot of time in there.
Yeah.
That building has a name? The Willet Building? It was a local auctioneer, real estate gentleman, Wayne Willet. Okay. Longtime resident here. So there wasn't like a stone that says Willet on top of it? No, like Wayne Willet Realty and Auction.
Okay. There was a sign up there for a long time.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good guy, neat guy.
All right, we'll move, next on our agenda would be commission reports, new business.
Had a Park and Rec Advisory Board meeting last Wednesday, did not have a quorum, so we just basically kind of sat around and talked about things, tossed things back and forth, but of course, no decisions were made without the quorum. Opened my water bill today, very nice newsletter, Tabitha, nice, colorful, informative. Look at the information in the water bill. You've got the newsletter from the city, you've got some information in there from Parks and Rec about registration for spring sports, you've got a pamphlet in there from Public Works. there from Public Works, consider, talking about sewer and sewer awareness, et cetera and so on. Really good information that we could not get out to you when we just had postcard-sized water bills, but now that you're getting letter size, the city's putting information in there. So one more place to learn about what's going on in the city of El Dorado.
No, no. I haven't opened my water bill yet, but I will as soon as I get home. That's all I got.
I don't have anything.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Tomorrow, 4:30 to 7:00, Trinity Episcopal Church's Annual Shrove Tuesday Pancake Feed. Free will offering, all-you-can-eat pancakes and sausage and fellowship and please come. Supposed to be nicer weather, and they got the parking lot cleared off, so come down and eat pancakes.
I don't, I have my CTC meeting on tomorrow, actually, right? Ted, isn't that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I haven't had any of my meetings yet. Yesterday, I made an adventure out into the great western snow field that we had, just to kind of see what other towns did on their snow removal. Eight o'clock yesterday, I hit Wichita, Andover, Augusta, Main Drags, Backstreets, and Secondaries, kind of eastern, eastern Wichita, Woodlawn, and then some neighborhoods between 13th and 21st, kind of. And I, I wish Brad was here, which I'm going to take a side note. What does it take to make sure that, I mean, our, our department heads are here, chief's here, you know, Tammy's here all the time, I mean, Brad's not here, Kurt, I haven't seen Kurt in a year. Is there a reason why they don't come to these meetings?
I mean, all it takes is me to tell them that.
I, no, I get it. I'm just, side note. Anyways, just side notes that.
I mean, I guess if the commission desires, we won't be here.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I was just asking that.
No, I mean, it's, it's a fair question.
Right. We, I would say of the five entities that I saw doing snow removal, Sedgwick County, Butler County, Andover, Augusta, El Dorado, and Wichita, Sedgwick County got, got the best grade. They, they, they did great. And I would say the three cities, Andover, Augusta, and El Dorado, were all right on par. Maybe Andover had a little bit less snow on their Main Drags, but every, pretty much, everybody was all kind of in the same, between eight and nine o'clock yesterday morning. So just, I figured why not put in four-wheel drive and go see what, what everybody's doing, just to, and I wanted to thank Brad for getting that tree off of Topeka and Central. I, I said Taylor the other day, but it was Topeka. But that tree is gone, and the person that told me that called me and said, "Thank you very much." They, they appreciated seeing that, that, that being taken care of as quick as he took care of it. I don't know how bad, how bad were the accidents yesterday, chief? Yeah, good. That, I mean, it seems like the citizenry stayed home. As far as I could tell, living, I mean, the road on Central was pretty good as far as the 15 cars that were on there at eight o'clock, so. But I just wanted to report that back to you guys, that I, I did, I did jump in the truck and go drive around our neighbors to kind of compare. And we, we were all pretty much on, on the same level of, of snow removal, so.
To answer your prior question about the department directors, generally I don't ask them to come if there's nothing on the agenda.
Okay, fair.
So they don't have to.
I just didn't know what it was.
No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And that's all I've got.
Okay. I think the only thing I have is mayor's dinner is Thursday. I don't know how many of you guys are planning to be there, but I haven't really seen our RSVP list yet.
There's a lot.
Are we going to be able to house in then?
We are at, we are at capacity.
I was going to say, at, at the PAC, we're at capacity. Right, it's going to be crowded. And that's great. I'm glad, glad. Do you have an RSVP list? I'd be.
Molly has it. I can have her send it.
Could you have her send that to me tomorrow so I can be prepared?
For my.
So that I can welcome those who are coming. Thank you. That is at the Performing Arts Center, a chance to, to show that place off a little bit, as well as we're going to have a presentation from Project Wichita, which I'm glad to have that, too. I think that's all I have. I will report that I will not be here at our next commission meeting, the 18th.
There you go.
Our vice.
Oh, yes. Did you pay him off to be gone?
You can make all these great decisions.
Better mark my calendar.
So, looking forward.
I want the gamble.
Right in here.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, that's all I have. David?
So today at noon, you may have heard a tornado warning drill. That's a normal one that they do as part of the sirens testing. Tomorrow, there will also be another tornado warning. That is the statewide tornado drill. Tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., you'll hear that. They're doing that throughout the state. It may seem cold outside, but we are actually entering weather, severe weather, so they're doing as part of severe weather awareness month, I believe. Tomorrow, they're doing the statewide tornado drill. So you, you did hear one today, you will hear one tomorrow. It probably won't be because there is a tornado. They are just trying to raise awareness for that, even though it's going to be still pretty cold out. Spring cleanup is coming, April 8th through the 12th. We are advising citizens to check the website or social media for details. I'll probably have a little bit more information at the next meeting, but just to kind of sort of mark it on your calendar, April 8th through the 12th will be spring cleanup. We have been having some, we actually had some citizens call in to City Hall this morning saying that we shut their water off on Sunday. We don't shut people off on Sunday, so if you aren't getting water through the pipe, means your pipes are frozen. I don't actually know how to unfreeze your pipes, but I do know how to prevent it. If you're going to be gone, or you're going to be out, or you're concerned about it, just make it so they drip a little. Don't necessarily turn it on, but just a little drip will help keep enough water going through the pipe that they won't freeze. If you have frozen pipes, I guess they want comp lumber or, I don't, I don't know. I really legitimately couldn't, sorry. And then we are getting ready to start our drainage project on First and Second Avenue. It's supposed to be starting this week, weather permitting, of course. And that will be putting some pipes in boxes under the street there near the alley of First and Second, which will hope, which will help with some of the flood issues that we've been having in that neck of the woods. So that will be starting up here pretty soon. We also have a number of park projects that are on hold. They're, they're queued up and ready to go, but we've got them on hold because of the, not necessarily the cold, but because we have some snow on the ground, obviously, but then probably more, more of the issue is the ground is very wet. And as a result of that, if we go in, we'll tear up and cause a lot of ruts and problems that we'll have to go back and replace anyway. So we're, we're waiting for the thaw to happen, and then we need a little bit of weather to dry out, and then we'll get some of these park projects that are queued up, and we'll get, we'll get moving on those. So we do have a lot of things that are going to be happening as soon as we get some cooperation from other nature. So with that, take any questions? Any of you have?
Any questions? None, thank you. We'll move to adjournment. If that's nothing further, we have a motion to adjourn.
We'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We moved to second. Any further question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. We are adjourned.